Everybody raise your hands. Okay. Payroll warrants, is there a question? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the payroll warrants that we were provided this afternoon?
I make a motion, we approve the payroll warrant.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion? All in favor?
Is there a number to that warrant?
The number was thirty-seven.
I didn't print it out, I read it online, so I, obviously now I want to.
Thirty-seven.
Okay.
Thank you.
The accounts payable warrant, Matt, can you give us that number?
Thirty-eight, and it's just the one today.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve accounts payable warrant number thirty-eight?
I make a motion, we approve accounts payroll warrant number thirty-eight.
I'll second.
Discussion?
I just got a question.
Okay, Mark?
Central equipment highway vehicle repair, what, forty-seven sixty-four, what did we have done?
Okay. Sorry, I need to look it up. Cheryl, do you know offhand?
I don't, I know Hugh had some work done on, I think, the, I'm gonna say it wrong, the Whacker Newsen?
Yeah, the Whacker Newsen, we've had some issues with the Whacker recently, I'm trying to think what the last one was.
Was that, didn't they have to update a cable or control cable or something we approved back a while ago for?
Well, there've been, there've been, hopefully we've seen the last of the repairs that need to be made. What I could do is give you a list, I'll have Hugh put together a list, I, I'm sorry, I can't tell you off the top of my head what, what the last report was.
Matt, I think, I think what happened was, I think he had some water in his fuel, and he had some issues with his fuel system, and they had to come down and do some diagnostics to all of these fuel system.
That's, I do recall that, but if you'd like, I can, I can give you a full list, because there's been, well, at least two or three items recently.
Yeah. I appreciate it.
Who's got his hands up?
Hello?
Could you give me a little bit more information on the audit reconciliation problem?
Yep, that's me.
Thank you.
Yes. Back when we first started balancing the accounts, we ended up having, we switched accounts, we went from DBNT or from Camden National Bank to DBNT.
Right.
In that transition, things got messed up in Trio with having two bank acca- two banks, three bank accounts within each bank, so that equals six GLs for Trio. We ended up with multiple GLs for Trio, and it basically just turned into a ball of yarn we could not unravel. We had GLs that were created, a general ledger account that was created that didn't need to be created, because we already had a secondary account, for example. So with multiple people balancing, multiple trying to fix it, I would try, I tried to fix a mistake that had already been fixed, so then we've got two fixes to one mistake. And things just completely, completely got jumbled, things that were supposed to go into the secondary account went into the shellfish account on Trio, but not at the bank. And honestly, it literally was just a thing that spiraled and got out of control and got to a level that a bookkeeper could not unravel, and we needed the accountant. So the accountant, Claudia, she spent eighty-nine hours doing this for us, she's got us straightened out, all of our accounts are good, the GLs will be good once they give us those adjustment, the journal adjustments, we'll get those fixed, a big chunk of a hundred and seventy-seven thousand was a hundred and fifty-six thousand of payroll for the school. I had done that on the bank side, but I didn't do it in Trio, so all of a sudden it looks like there's an extra hundred and fifty-six thousand sitting in the bank, but Trio's missing a hundred and fifty-six thousand, and that was just a journal entry to show that hundred and fifty-six thousand went into the secondary account. So that was a big chunk of it right there, just one journal entry that didn't get done. And so it's a combination, last year when we, thing, and did it FY nineteen, they said everything's balanced, and I said, no, we're still holding outstanding checks in the DBNT account, but those outstanding checks are from Camden's account. So I think it fell on deaf ears, I think it's a combination of two new banks, brand-new auditors, staff shortage here, and it just, it just spiraled into, honestly, a ball of yarn I could, we could not unravel, we needed an accountant to help, the bookkeeper leveled that was just above us. And so they're powerfully, I'm sorry.
Reconciled now.
Yes, yep, I've been working with Claudia, and throughout the whole time, we constantly, we always found to make sure whatever checks we've written, those have cashed and cleared, whichever deposits have deposited, those are all reconciled, so we see everything happening, we just couldn't reconcile to the balance because of four, three bank accounts with six GLs created for them, so it was, was no consistency.
Yeah.
Yep, we've got it figured out, and she spent eighty-nine hours doing it, which, for their rate, it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour, but because it's partial auditor issue, partial staffing issue, treasurer issue here, it would have been eleven thousand to get this fixed. He asked if we were willing to meet him halfway, and we settled on four thousand.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, Robin, we can, we can make up part of that four thousand, I was hoping we could delay some items and you, use some savings in administration, but Cheryl ran the numbers today, and as of now, we can come up with two thousand to cover that four thousand dollar cost. So later on the agenda, I'm gonna ask the board to approve a two thousand dollar transfer from contingency to cover a part of this payment to the auditor.
And towards the end of the year, if we do have a little funds left in the admin, we can replenish the contingency. But when my budget, I don't, there's, I don't leave a four thousand dollar wiggle room in there, each of our line items are budgeted very, very tight, so to come up with four thousand dollars. Go ahead, Josh.
Yep, I, I guess the only, one of the, one of the comments I had was how much money is outstanding that we have to pay them to finish up the audit, because we have yet to have an audit presentation.
I have a twenty-five hundred dollar check that I'm holding in the safe until we get that, and then we'll owe them five hundred more dollars for their audit portion, because they get seven thousand for the audit.
Right, I, my preference is not to pay them the final amount until they actually show up and do the presentation.
Yep, and we had the, the paycheck, or one of their checks was on last meeting's AP warrant, and I just had the ladies put it in the safe, and we weren't, we weren't, weren't gonna give it to them anyways, until we've got the audit all situated.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
And they're, they're on time this year with the audit?
Yeah, yep, even with the eighty-nine hours that she's had to put in there, she's on, it'll be earlier than when we've gotten it before, good. That's nice.
I'm a little concerned that they didn't discover this during the audit. How far back does this go?
Just the nineteen. We were balanced up until a certain period in two thousand and nineteen. And then we were hit, that's when we got two different banks, two different auditors, short staff. It was just enough, we were just literally putting Band-Aids on items for a little while. And we did tell them, it can't be balanced, because you guys are holding outstanding checks for Camden National in the DBNT reconciliation, and that's what I meant by it fell on deaf ears.
Yeah.
That help, Lou?
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor of accounts payable warrant number thirty-eight? Are you hands? Got us all? Okay, the next item on the agenda is the meeting with Senator Chloe Maxman and Representative Lydia Craftz, and Chloe has not joined us yet. And Lydia, a question, do you wanna, you know, I, I know that the most fun thing that on your agenda this evening is not to listen to our whole select board meeting. Do you want to go ahead and we can start, or would you like to wait for Chloe to join us? Oh, there she is. What timing. Welcome, Chloe. We were just getting to be part of the agenda, and so I was wondering what we were going to do, and here you are joining us.
Oh, yeah.
Welcome. Thank you, and thank you both for agreeing to come and visit with us tonight to let us know what your thoughts are and what you're, what you'll be focusing on in this next legislative term, and to listen to us and kind of what we would like you to focus on as far as the town of Damascata is concerned. So with that, I will turn it over to both of you.
Great, sure, well, I'm happy to jump in if that works for you, Chloe. Thank you, Matt, and to the whole select board for having us this evening, I'm Lydia Craftz, I'm a resident of Newcastle. I'll just give you a quick introduction for those of you I haven't met yet. I am a clinical social worker, I work down at the Bristol Consolidated School. I run our AOS Special Education Behavior Program for four out of the five schools here in AOS ninety-three. I grew up in Belfast, received my master's degree through the University of Maine, met my husband while living up the coast a little bit, and he was already settled in Newcastle. He's also a science teacher at the Bristol School, so moved down this way about ten, eleven years ago now. And, you know, got interested in running for office really around mental health treatment and healthcare in our state and really in our nation. As a clinical social worker, I see a lot of unmet needs, both for children and adults right here in our own community. And I think, you know, this pandemic has certainly highlighted the need for services and supports for all ages, especially during something like a global pandemic, so that was my first interest in running for the House of Representatives. And then closely followed by the fact that I am a mom, I have a stepdaughter and, who's fourteen, and a daughter who's five. And, you know, having grown up here in Maine, I really wanna raise my children with the hope and interest in keeping Maine their, their home, and having a Maine that really works for everyone. You know, I'm inspired daily, whether it's the public school teachers, I was, you know, visiting with some folks out remotely on Monthegan last night, getting started in, in the legislature, just seeing how hardworking and dedicated our community is to all of our success. And so I'm, I'm pleased and proud to have been elected in November, I am new to politics. This, I serve on the appeals board for the town of Newcastle, but this is certainly my first role at the state level. And so I'm really here tonight to hear from you and to hear from the board around how we can support municipalities moving forward. I know it's a really hard time looking ahead and looking at forecasting, although slightly brighter than we were thinking about six months ago. But still, I know there are a lot of serious, big decisions to make, and I'd really love to hear from the board how Senator Maxman and myself can support the town of Damascata as well as our entire district. So I'm happy to take questions now, or I can wait until Senator Maxman has had a chance to speak also.
Let's, let's hear from the senator, and then we can open it up for a discussion.
Perfect, sounds great.
Hi, everyone, I'm so glad to be here with you tonight, there's a, it's a crazy world out there, and it's nice to root ourselves in local politics. I'm still working out the, the kinks of working with adopted rescue puppies, so that's why you see her bopping all over the place. But I, I'm, I'm the new state senator for District thirteen, which is all of Lincoln County except for Dresden, plus Washington and Windsor. I was a state rep for the Jefferson Whitefield Nobleboro area before that for two years. I grew up in Nobleboro, my family's farm, I went to Lincoln for high school, and the, the thing most people take away after talking with me is that I just genuinely love our community and our state, and just wanna fight, fight for our home and our, our way of living here. It's obviously such a challenging time in more ways than, than are possible to, to articulate right now, but I think with that comes the responsibility to make sure that those who are hurting most in our community are not hurt more. But also that we're rebuilding in a way that makes us stronger, I think, just from a lot of the, the stories that I've heard and the work that I've done in our district, it just, there's, there is so much room to, to keep making sure that, that rural communities can rebuild in, in a way that makes us stronger and better, because we know that hard times unfortunately will keep coming our way. So I'm, I'm really excited to get to work in the legislature this, this time. It's definitely past due that we are in session, and like Representative Craftz said, I'm, I'm, I'm here for you and to do whatever y'all need. I'm gonna be on the Agriculture Conservation Forestry Committee and the Marine Resources Committee with Representative Craftz this session, which are, I know I pick my committees based on the district, so I'm here for you and looking forward to hearing what's on your mind.
Thank you. Before we begin, can I just ask Lydia, can you let us know what committees you'll be serving on?
I have to send us into the Marine Resources Committee, also with Senator Maxman.
Okay. That's great, you know, it's perfect for us here in town. Okay, I'd like to open it up for discussion, and I know that everybody's name is, you know, on this, on the screen here, but when you first, you know, introduce yourselves, if you could just say who you are and ask your question or make your comments. Let's open it up, raise your hand, and let me know what you'd like to say, what you'd like for them to hear. Wow, oh, how's that? Oh, Mark, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'll jump in, and I guess I got a question for both of you, is Damascata being a service center? And we always look to that revenue, you know, in lieu of taxes, and we only had so far in two thousand and nineteen, we had four hundred dollars, and then we serve all of Lincoln County. We tried to initiate a local sales tax, which Dow did not help us at all. Just trying to offset some of that cost to the taxpayer of Damascata who carries the expense with so much, being a service center, and what is your feeling on that?
Do you wanna go first, Lydia, or do you want me to go?
Sure, I'm happy, you know, Mark, I would really wanna talk a little bit more about it, I'm not familiar with the specific, when you describe the Servic- Service Center, what those costs break down to be, could you, I mean, I'm just acknowledging, I don't have a lot of experience with it, so I would need a little bit more detail.
I could jump in here as well if you'd like, is that okay, Mark?
Yeah.
Because I, we did testify before the joint committee, I think it was on financial services a couple of years ago on this issue. And, well, just to back up a little bit, Damascata is one of sixty-nine towns in cities in, in Maine that's designated under a criteria developed by the former planning office in Maine as a regional service center. And in our particular case, we serve a population of at least seventeen thousand people, even though our population is approximately twenty-two hundred. So what that means is there are considerable number of nonprofits and, you know, a whole host of businesses that are in our community, and, and the hospital in particular is a nonprofit. And that doesn't, that, some of which don't pay taxes, but we as the town, the town taxpayers, need to provide the basic services. We need to provide the, the road infrastructure, sidewalk infrastructure, police departments that other nearby communities don't have a necessity for, you know, a great example is our downtown parking lot, we're spending about ninety thousand dollars a year just to maintain that. So there are a number of overhead expenses that, that other communities do not have. And the, the idea here with the local option sales tax, and the bill that actually passed the House last year, but then didn't, wasn't approved by the Senate, and then didn't go to the governor consequently, would have allowed towns, the voters in towns, to vote for a local option sales tax up to one percent. And the idea there is that the, the businesses, the retail businesses and the overnight businesses that pay taxes currently would add a penny on the sales tax that would go into the Times coffers. And those in our, and not all communities are saying this when they ask for, for this, this option, but in our case, the board definitely wants that money to be used to reduce the burden on our taxpayers, which is higher because we're a centered community. So that's the, that's the thought there, but we are, again, a service center where we're a member not only of the Maine Municipal Association, but also the, the Maine Service Center Coalition, so we're, we're pretty active on, on both of those levels. And I said, we're, we're one of sixty-nine communities that are designated as service centers, we're one of twenty-five designated as major reg- regional service centers.
Great, thank you for that, Matt, that's helpful. I am curious to know, at the time of that legislation, what the response from the business community was in Damascata?
Definitely, it's, it's, and, and this is just anecdotal, we didn't, we didn't do a poll, because, well, at the time, even though the board wanted our taxpayers, our voters, to have the option for voting in a sales tax, the board wasn't necessarily in favor of it at that time. So if the bill passed, if the statute were to be approved, then we would, then we would see what the residents and the businesses' preference was. But, you know, my only experience talking to businesses is anecdotal, and they're wary of, of that. They're wary of anything that would make them less competitive with businesses and other communities.
I had another question, Mark, you mentioned just a insignificant four hundred dollars. Are there, you know, with so many central nonprofit organizations, I know in other areas nonprofits do offer a, I'm not gonna have the terminology correct, but a cash in lieu or a donation, is that, is that significant for the town of Damascata, is that a consistent?
Well, we, we've had four hundred dollars, that's, we've had one church.
Yeah.
Four hundred dollars.
That's the only reimbursement or that replacement of lost revenue?
Right, only one.
It's called a payment in lieu of taxes, and, or a pilot is the acronym for it. We have the four hundred, as Mark mentioned, and then more recently, we have an apartment complex that was recently taken over by a nonprofit, and they've agreed to also pay up payment in lieu of taxes.
Matt, it might be helpful if you were to email the Regional Service Center report, I know it's a
I will.
But, you know, so they'll have kind of the, the history and background and a little more detail about it.
You know, and I think the point I'm trying to make here is, and I realize we got a really big uphill battle to even let our taxpayers have a say in this. But what I'm worried about is in Augusta, losing that excise tax on our vehicles. There's so many other taxes that we count on the town of Damascata, that if you take those away from us, you're really gonna handcuff us even more. And that's the point I really wanna get across.
Yeah, I wanted to mention the, the homestead exemption, I know that's been talked about, changing that, and how do you go to the other one?
Revenue sharing.
The revenue sharing, yeah, because we depend on that. You know, Matt talked about how much the back parking lot costs, and it's gonna cost a lot more once we put our restrooms in, because now we're gonna have to pay for water, sewage, restroom supplies, somebody to clean the restroom, and so our costs are gonna go up as a town servicing people, you know, that do live here, but also a lot of people that don't live here. And so any help that we can get as a service center offset those costs, so we don't, you know, break backs of the people that live here. Last thing we want to do is to have our citizen read, you know, say we can't afford to live in Damascata anymore. Mindful of, you know, our taxpayers. Anything that you can help in that regard, that would be terrific.
Senator Maxman, are you aware, I have not had a chance to go through all of the upcoming legislation, as you can imagine, but I am just curious, it had, if you're aware of any continued discussion of that local option sales tax?
I haven't heard it coming back, I did vote for it last session. I'm a big proponent of local control, and I just don't think it's the legislature's place when a bill like that comes in to just shut it down. And I also think it's important for service centers, I, so I don't know if it's coming back or not. I also, you may, one of, one of my big priorities and one of the, you know, I, I try not to make like two definitive statements in, in a public place, but something that I'm really concerned about is that the budget is going to take money out of things like revenue sharing or, or decrease the amount that the state is sending to town for schools. So I'm, I have some pretty hard lines around that and what I'm looking at in the budget, and, and so that's definitely at the top of my mind. And, yeah, I think the situation right now, it, it could be very easily, the burden could be placed right back on towns, and I think that's really, that's really unfair. So I definitely hear what you're saying, and I'm thinking, thinking along the same lines when we
And, you know, honestly, we do not expect you to make any promises this evening. We just wanna share with you kind of some of our thoughts, and if you, what, if you go back on Lincoln County News or LCTV and watch any of our budget meetings over the last few years, we've talked about this year in and year out, because it's the same issues that crop up every year.
And I think there's a statewide, you know, we are not the only two people echoing the support of municipal government. I think it's, you know, even though we're remote, even though we're not in person right now, you know, I'm hearing this conversation come up a lot. And, you know, the cost of education and public education, you know, I know that school budgets are a huge commitment for towns and communities. And so I think the state really does carry a lot of responsibility in continuing to support our local municipalities regardless of their size.
Anything?
I'd just like to add that I think the excise tax that we have in the town of Damascata is, is an area that we'd really like to push to stay away from. As far as the state coffers, because, you know, I look at it from a business point of view, I'll speak, is paying that amount of money into the town, and then you take that away, and then you go ahead and take that away from the, the residential real estate tax. You know, it's a, it's a double whammy, and I think it's very important that town or Damascata hold the line on that item, it's very important to us, as we know how much it helps us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The access taxes may be one of the things that I hear from constituents, which is so interesting, because, I mean, I, I share the same view with you on it, Mark, but it is, it is, it is quite interesting, I think I hear it more than healthcare access is, let's get rid of the excise tax.
Boy, that would be nice. Anything else, the, the only other, you know, the comment that I make is the medical marijuana issue. I know that there's a, a board that's looking at different aspects of regulations, and as you both probably know, Damascata is kind of the marijuana mecca here on the mid-coast, we have two, or one retail store and one in the works, which is the planning board, and we have two medical marijuana stores, so in tabs with what's going on. No, I, I think that although we, we don't mind the marijuana shops being in town, we just want them to Now, I, I think that although we, we don't mind the marijuana shops being in town, we just want them to operate on a level footing with each other and and all of the, the laws and regulations moving forward.
If I could just add to that, Robin, the, the state collects 20% on, on adult marijuana sales and excise. And we've asked to share a small part of that. And you know, most recently the legislation, well, one of the, the early bills called for 5% of that 20% to, to go to municipalities that opt in for, for marijuana establishments. And that failed. So I, I think it's, it's, you know, we're, we're not really trying to ask for money out of existing funds that people have depended on for years, the state has depended on for years. But this is an additional revenue source. And the town has additional expense because our voters wanted to allow marijuana establishments or legalized marijuana establishments in town. So that's, that's another area where we'd like to see some changes. That we would like a, a small share of the revenue that the, the, the state collects from marijuana establishments. And you know, most other states that have legalized marijuana do share the revenues with their, with their municipalities. And then the other, the item is kind of a bone of contention. When we talk about local control, the Board of Selectmen decided years ago that it would allow a remote attendance at board meetings. And the state is kind of going back and forth. There was a bill that would have prohibited that and, and the former governor vetoed it. We believe it makes sense for communities such as ours. It's, you know, I'm very pleased that we have five people who, five qualified people who are willing to be on our, our Board of Selectmen. But if, if we don't allow remote access, when they have other business commitments or are out of town for, for other reasons, there's no reason why they shouldn't be participating in our meetings. And we'll, we'll continue to have remote meetings even after the COVID crisis is done until somebody tells us that it's illegal. But the, a bill that's currently being pushed for by MMA would make the governor's order that allows that remote access or remote participation to be a permanent part of the state statutes. And we certainly support that. We think it makes a lot of sense. And for nothing else, let our community decide whether or not that's appropriate for our community.
Yeah.
I, I think, yeah, obviously we all echo Matt's comments since we do attend meetings remotely now. Few meetings here, not all. And I think that the experiment, if you will, that's been going on now was Zoom meetings state level and county level and the local level really do show that it is workable.
And the, the bills would not allow for, if they're approved, would not allow for town meetings and annual town meetings. They would still have to be in-person meetings.
But that, you know, that's something to look at, I think.
I think, you know, having members be able to attend, you know, anything that makes participating in the select board process or other local committee, you know, is, is always a benefit. But I also think it increases engagement. It allows folks to access meetings who may not otherwise have the capacity to attend in person. And I think that's great for just overall civic engagement. I've seen that at the school board level. I mean, myself as a working parent, working in the schools, just being able to make dinner and listen and participate in the board, a school board meeting has been really a great experience. So I, I'm in full support of that.
Thank you.
I'll just add one, one quick thing with that is the Educational Plant Maintenance Association in the state of Maine. We would have these monthly meetings where we would probably have 10, 12 people show up. And now we have anywhere from 75 to 100 people show up per month to take part in these discussions, which has been very helpful.
Good example, good example that it can, that it's workable and it increases engagement, if you will, with interested people.
And I'll just add in that on the marijuana front, I'm definitely with you. And a lot of that policy comes through the agriculture committee. And so I, I keep a pretty eye on that. And I am in agreement on remote, remote access as well. That's so, so important on so many fronts.
Hey, Lou.
I have a lot of concern about the present COVID situation. I'm very concerned that elderly and low income people are going to fall through the cracks as getting their vaccinations. I'm also concerned that it seems like the Senate and the House are doing nothing to help the governor. You see the governor on television and it looks like she's been in a 20 round boxing match. I want to know what the legislature is going to do to help solve this problem instead of placing blame on everybody else.
Yeah, I, I hear you, Lou. It's, it's sorry, it's just, it's extremely complex right now. And I definitely think the legislature needs to be playing a bigger role. I've seen quite a few bill titles in around the COVID vaccine, but the content of those bills isn't public yet. So it's a little hard to say what some of the conversations are going to be. But I know that at least what I'm hearing from, from constituents so far is just a lot of questions about exactly who is in each phase. And I'm still waiting on answers from the department about what that's going to look like. I think those, those conversations are still happening. And you know, we start, we're starting committee in a couple of weeks. And so, so the ball is, is starting to roll on, on this legislation that needs to be happening. And I personally don't have a lot of influence over, you know, when, when and how we're in session. But I certainly make it known that I think we should be doing the people's work now and every day because everyone else is going to work, but we're not. So that doesn't make much sense.
Well, I'm concerned again that things are going too slow. The governor is not of my political party, but I feel a great deal of concern for what's happening to her. It's up to you people to come together and solve the problem quickly. Not having a lot of committee meetings, et cetera. That doesn't help us. People are dying. I'm concerned about people like Haas. He, Haas, when was the last time you could leave the house?
Well, you're putting, you're putting me on the spot, aren't you?
Yes.
Okay. What I want to, what I want to say here is I'm fine. As, as you may not be able to see, I'm on an oxygen cantileur. So I have, I have an oxygen tank with me when I go anywhere. But what I want to say in support of what you were saying is this. I'm a mathematician and I've been tracking the COVID state over 17 different states. So I have relatives, children and grandchildren in 17 different states. And Maine has been the, the outlier, the one way below. But as we're tracking it, the last month and a half, Maine is now rising like the old ones did the beginning of October. And so this is going to only get a lot worse before it gets any better. That's the mathematics. I hope I'm wrong. I probably am wrong, but the numbers are there. That's the opening you gave me, Louis.
Yep.
Okay. Any other comments? I, I know, again, I'm, I know that you can't say things publicly and like you're at the beginning of your terms and the beginning of the session. And so there are a lot of unknowns for you. And as you get to work, some of it, I'm sure will be made crystal clear.
If I could just, I, if I could just share, Lou, you know, I have two aging parents who also have not been able to leave the home or see their grandchildren. And I'm fearful of how they get groceries. And so I hear those real concerns. We just locally had our first case in a place I'm closely connected with. And you know, the fears of real health risks to all of us and our most vulnerable folks are huge. And I, I know that there are a lot of concerns with the vaccination outroll. And I, I hear what you're saying and it's important to me, you know, both in my role as a representative, but also it's deeply personal as I'm sure it is to all of us in this meeting. So thank you for voicing that. And I hope that we will have some, some improvements coming.
Lydia, the numbers are just growing. They're growing fantastically in the state. This thing is out of control.
But eventually this too shall pass, as they say. We just have to do, do the best we can with the, the resources that we're given. Make smart decisions on either staying home, who gets vaccinated, when, so on and so forth. Social distancing, masking and, and what have you. So it's, it's compilation of a lot of smart decisions by everybody. And using the resources that we get to the very best of, you know, their capability.
I had COVID.
I know.
Followed every procedure. We always wore our mask. We kept the distance. I have no idea how I, how I got it.
Yeah.
So people are following the procedures and still getting it.
Yeah. That I don't know what to, you know, what to say. Just do the best, every individual has to do the best they can. And the state representatives, all the state representatives from the governor and the legislature and what have you, the public health office officials have got to make the best use of the resources they have available to them. And make smart decisions as quickly as they can. You know, that, that's all we can do, you know?
Thank you for your time.
So, yeah, I, 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 on behalf of the board, I appreciate each of you coming and being grilled and listening to our concerns. I know that you're probably hearing from all of the towns in your district to, to find out what they have in mind. And I suspect that some of the issues are going to be the same and some of them are a bit different. So we appreciate you coming here and listening, listening to us. And you are welcome to come and visit with us at any time. You know, we always will have spaces on our agenda available for you. Best of luck to each of you, your newly elected officials. So best in your positions. So best of luck to each of you in this upcoming legislature.
Very much. And please, Matt and the entire board, please reach out if there are specific legislative issues. And I, I would love to continue to work together. So thank you all.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Thank you to both of you.
Thank you guys.
More than welcome to stay with us for the rest of the meeting. Take care of your puppies.
Thank you guys.
Thanks.
Okay, citizens' comments, general correspondence. Anything, Matt?
I don't have any correspondence unless Ha says anything. Okay.
Now manage your items.
All right. Just a request, if you could, each of the board members, if you could stop by tomorrow. Just, we have a stack of documents for you to sign minutes. And I think we had a, a deed for you to sign and some other documents. The ladies out front have put together a packet for you to sign. So if you could just call first and then we can come down and let you in. So.
Sounds good.
And I sent out a fairly large attachment regarding the medical marijuana rules.
Yes.
I believe that those need to be approved by the legislature. I, I didn't, I hadn't had a chance to confirm that with Kate before, but I believe that's the case. And it's a situation where the Office of Marijuana Policy is finally able to spend more time on the, the medical marijuana statutes where they've been focused almost exclusively on adult use in the, in, you know, up to this point. I, I, Stan, I haven't gone through it in detail. Stan has read through most of the document. I've just looked at the summary, but I think there's some very wise decisions that are included in these in, in this draft. One has to do with tightening up on the medical marijuana because right now the lines are very blurred between what's medical marijuana and what is recreational or adult use. And I think some of the providers on the medical side are taking advantage of that ambiguity. So this, this cleans it up a little bit.
Matt, I, I read that, the information that you provided. And it said that municipal officer, officials are encouraged to participate in the initial request for feedback. Comments are due on no later than Sunday, January 10th.
Right.
I know it's late. Is there any way that we could get our comments on record based on, maybe you could do a letter or, you know, I don't know if they accept by email or whatever, based on our previous comments, concerns about signage and the, you know, kind of the sales pitch up here on Main Street about, you know, come in and get your medical card for $49.
Definitely. If you want to send, I, I can collect all those, those comments that we've had previously. And then if you have anything additional, send them to me. I say Saturday and I will, I will send the, I can't remember who the contact was, but I'll send them a list of, of changes we'd like to see in our comments of support or whatever edits.
The Office of Marijuana Policy is the one receiving the comments. Speaking kind of for myself, based on our previous comments and what I read in this today. And I think because Damascata was one of the early adopters and, you know, of marijuana businesses, both, you know, adult use and, and medical, that we might've had more experience than some of the other towns. So I thought, you know, if y'all don't think it's a good idea, speak now.
Sounds good.
Yeah. And we plan, Stan gave him a call today. He caught a couple of typos that we, we felt were significant. And he, he, he called them, but we'll, we will have some comments for them. Based on the previous conversations that we've had here.
We do have experience with it and a lot of other towns may not, you know, I think it's important that we weigh in since we have talked about it, you know, a number of occasions.
Will do.
I do, our businesses are doing well. It would be nice if we could do some of that.
Yeah, they didn't give us much of a, a time to respond. We just got that yesterday.
Yeah, well. But, yeah. Okay.
And the last item I had, I, I sent you all a message on this and I thank Josh for flagging this for me. This has to do with the Historic Preservation Ordinance and the commission that's formed as part of that ordinance. If you take a close look at our charter, the, the town, that while the Board of Selectmen can create committees, it can create, it says you can initiate committees, boards and commissions. And then it also says you can create ad hoc or temporary committees. But then if you go to the section on standing committees, it lists them specifically. You know, the planning board, the appeals board, the cemetery committee. And it, it doesn't specifically or expressly say that, that the town meeting by ordinance can create additional commissions. So I talked with Amanda, she, we've corresponded about this in the last couple of days and I talked with her yesterday about it. And to be safe, I think it would be wise to, to have the citizens pass a charter amendment allowing the, the town meeting to create a commission for allowing the, the town meeting to create a commission for historical preservation review. And that way we're safe in case there's ever a challenge to the authority of the commission. And it's, the process, I sent you out a, a summary from MMA. The process is, is pretty straightforward. It's very similar to the way we pass ordinances. We have to give due notice. We have a public hearing, and then it's voted on presumably by a secret ballot, which is what we had planned to do for the amendments anyway.
Question.
Mark?
So would that be a secret ballot, be the day before the town meeting, so that all the people would have a chance to vote on it?
Yes. Yeah, I think that was the board's intent with regard to the ordinance amendments for the historical preservation ordinances, to have that on a secret ballot like you did last March. So, yeah, everyone would.
You know, the only reason I'm bringing, as, the only reason I'm bringing that up is I'm always in favor of the maximum amount of people having a say. Because as we know, our town meetings have gone down over the years.
Right.
You know, so I just, thank you.
Matt, can we use, I don't, and I, I think I might know the answer to this, the ballot box that's out in front of the town office, can we use that for our balloting, or is it just for state?
We can use it for our balloting.
Okay.
We can't use it for anything but balloting, but we.
Okay, but we can use it for local, not the state or national. Okay. That's helpful. Anything else?
I don't have anything else under town manager items.
Official action items. Shellfish contract. Marine law enforcement. Okay, the new contract is the same as the actual contract. It's the contract for the sheriff's department to provide the marine law enforcement services. The only thing that's changed is the application. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the joint shellfish contract for Lincoln County Sheriff's Department.
I will second.
Any discussion? All in favor? And that's unanimous. Great, thank you. Oh, the Nobleboro transfer agreement. Jefferson, the transfer agreement. Matt, if you want to talk about this a little bit, we're getting an increase.
Yeah, I, I wasn't able to go to the, the budget meeting. I took sick leave last week. But, um, yeah, I did talk to Dick Spear, who's the selectman, who was a selectman, I think, chair of the Board of Selectmen in Nobleboro, and also heads up the, the Jefferson Nobleboro Council that oversees the, the transfer station. He told me there was going to be an increase, and he said it's due to the fact that, you know, the recyclables are down, you know. We've been there with, with that, that issue of, you know, China not accepting recyclables it once did. And, and now much of what we did recycle is no longer allowed. And then also the fact that he couldn't take as much from the surplus as he did last year. Last year he took 100,000, 135,000. This year, he just took 100,000 from surplus. But then, when I got the paperwork today, I, I did some calculations, and I called Dick right after I did the calculations. They've changed the formula for owners versus non-owners. And the non-owners are, are Bremen, Damascata, and Newcastle. And although the percent of the budget just increases by a fraction of a percent, it's kind of a, a misleading thing from when you calculate out, calculate out what that means. So our, our increase is 17.26%, which we didn't budget for. And the increases for the owners are far less than that. There's, you know, there's justification for that. They're taking the risk. They have to put the, the, the staffing and the extra administrative time into their facility. And as I understand it, we had an opportunity to be an owner, but we opted out. 2000, was it 2007? I'm, you know, quite a while ago. So, but it, it does, it does limit drastically the control we have over budgets and budget increases. Dick did point out, and rightfully so, that the budget number today is the same as it was in 2007. And we've been able to take advantage of a lowering cost every, every year. It's gotten to be a, a very well-run operation, and we've benefited from that. But it is a bit of a hit. It's quite a hit, especially when you're talking about nine, I think it was 9100. I don't have my, the page I sent you in front of me, which is, you know, half a year of the increase. So.
9100 on the accounts, people.
Pardon?
It was $9100.
Oh, okay, okay.
On the account table warrant.
Okay.
Next voice.
So I'm, I'm asking for you to number one, approve the, the, the transfer station contract. And number two, to authorize a contingency transfer for the $9100.
I'd just like to say, I was, I was involved way back in that day of 2000, whatever. And we actually researched purchasing a piece of land from Hennifer Brothers. And we were going to build our own transfer station out there, and the townspeople voted to not to go that route. Now, with that said, looking at the numbers of what we were talking back then and where we're at now, we actually are getting a good deal. And I think it's a well-run facility. They're basing it on our population, nothing to do with our businesses. So I, I think it's a well-oiled machine up there, and I think we need to keep that relationship as the taxpayer has voted to continue.
Yeah, and that, that reminds me, Mark, that, that Dick did say, you know, he acknowledged, of course, that this is a big jump. But he said, he, he feels like the increases will level off going forward for the next several years. So.
Did he think some things, recyclables and what have you, were down just because of COVID? And people, you know, we didn't have the visitors, we didn't have as much business or anything, or?
He didn't say, he said, he said demo, you know, they do get a revenue from demo, and that was, that was down. And, but as far as the other recyclables go, I think it's a continuation of, of what we saw last year where
China's not accepting.
A lot of the plastics that were recyclable are no longer accepted.
Okay. All right. Well, I agree with Mark. They, I think they do a fabulous job out there, you know. So. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer station contract.
I'll second.
Okay, now let me ask you, do you want to include in that motion transferring $9100 from the contingency fund, or do you want a second motion for that?
We want a second motion for that.
Okay. All right. So we'll vote on approving the contract with the Nobleboro Jefferson Transfer Station. Any discussion?
I, I have one question for Matt. If you can ask Dick Spear why Nobleboro Parking Ride is in their snowplowing budget for the transfer station. Because there's, it's a, there's a line item in their budget. And I, I don't know if they lump the transfer station and the parking ride together for the snowplowing, or if, because the actual is like 2,400, and the real number is 3,000. So, just, why would you have a parking ride that's near your town office and your transfer station?
Okay, I'll ask him.
Okay.
Our fees are based on residents. Does that include summer residents, non, not Damascata residents?
No, and I think that's to our advantage, except that, well, that stands on its own. That is to our advantage. But the only commercial account that they charge in Damascata is the campground. So basically, they get that money on top of what they, they charge us, you know, for this contract. But, yeah, to answer your question, is there's, there's, there's no charge for the, the people who aren't, you know, in our, in our census, the 20, 2100 plus. Yeah.
So it would not make sense for us to look into charging a fee to non-residents?
They're already paying, they're already paying their property taxes.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. Yeah.
Mark, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just got a comment on that. What Matt was talking about was we did have, before we did away with our policy, that businesses had to come in and take a license out and let us know who was taking their commercial trash. And that was a whole issue about years ago, was, well, Damascata has so much trash. How are we going to go ahead and keep track of that? Now, we just did away with that a year or two ago. So if Nobleboro is still going ahead and just using the population and accepting what the Pemecud Campground brings over, and Pemecud Campground actually pays that bill, we're in, we're in pretty good shape.
That's right.
Okay, any other comments? We'll vote on the motion to approve the transfer station budget. All in favor? Okay. And the second is that Matt had requested the authorization to take $9100 from the contingency funds and transfer it to pay for this additional increase.
I'll make a motion to approve the 9100 from contingency for the transfer station costs.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, cemetery deed and perpetual care agreement. This is with Lori Ann Curtis. And do I hear a motion to accept the cemetery deed and perpetual care maintenance contract with Lori Curtis?
I'll make a motion to accept, approve the cemetery deed and perpetual care agreement with Lori Ann Curtis.
Okay, I'll second it. Discussion? All in favor? Okay. Okay. Anything else? Would they go to the order? Yes, sir.
I just, I just had that, that one more, that one additional item on the contingency transfer, the request to transfer the 2,000 to cover the amount that we cannot cover for the, the audit, the extra audit fee.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion that we transfer $2,000 from the contingency fund to cover a portion of the auditing fee.
I'll second.
Discussion?
How does our contingency fee account stay?
You know, we started out with 24,000, where if you approve this, will be, will be 8,000 to 9,000 in that range. Good.
And we don't anticipate any contingency items coming up, I hope.
No, and we, you know, we also have a bit of a cushion where the town meeting has allowed the Board of Selectmen to, to to expend up to $25,000 in undesignated funds if, if there's an emergency. So we've got a bit of a cushion.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Selectmen's discussion items. I'm, I'm just going to see who I have on the screen. Start with Josh.
I'm pretty good. Just keep everybody healthy and follow all the safety protocols. And I am signed up to get a vaccination whenever the fire department is allowed to get one. So we'll see how bad my arm hurts that day.
Daryl.
It's good to see everybody in the new year, and let's just hope that 2021 is a little better off than 2020.
Well, it can't get much worse, huh?
I don't know.
I have nothing. I wish, I hope everybody had a happy new year.
Thank you. And Mark?
The only thing I got to do is, you know, I wish everybody that good health is absolutely. But what I'd like to do is point out that what's going on in Washington today is just a perfect example of somebody that's using their position to try to make a statement about themselves. And I think what we have to realize is being a selectman, or a senator, or House of Representatives, you got to realize that that position is actually bigger than ourselves. And we're here to represent the people that we represent. So it's a perfect example today, what's going on in Washington. And I just hope this is all going to turn out, which I'm sure it will. But I just wanted to bring that up. It's just unbelievable what's going on today in Washington.
Yeah.
It is. So thank you for that, Mark. I only, I just have a few things. And I, first of all, Matt had sent us an email about, that Lori Farady had sent about the Rotary donating an additional 1,000 masks to the police department. And we all got the email, but I think it would be nice, Evan, I think you're still with us, if you could, you know, acknowledge that, that's terrific. There's, the Rotary is such, such a good partner. Has been such a good partner through the pandemic in, you know, supplying the town and others with some of the equipment they need during the pandemic. The other thing I'd like to do is to, you know, when I looked at the payroll stub, I looked and I saw who was working on Christmas Eve and Christmas Day and New Year's Eve. And I would really like to give a shout out to all of the people. The police department, the art department that was on call, the EMTs that were on call, all those folks. That even though all of our celebrations were a lot smaller than they have been in the past, and people were told to stay home and what have you, you know, these folks came out to ensure our safety on these, you know, holidays. And so, you know, thanks to all of them for, for doing that. Appreciate your service. Everybody else, happy new year.
Good.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I so move.
Second?
I'll say it.
All in favor? We'll see you in two weeks. And don't forget to go up to the town office and start signing some documents for Matt.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Good night.